From the board that we have two vacancies as of tonight's meeting. Mrs. Sadowski has retired after 24 years on the board. And Mrs. Sukaitis is small.
Thank you for your support. Your role call.
Mr. Ortiz?
Here.
Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Ms. Sevilla? Dr. Caldwell?
Here.
We have a call.
Great, item number two, please rise for the flag salute. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation.
Before we begin the meeting, the board secretary having declared two vacancies by the statute. The board has 60 days to fill those two vacancies. And the public is now informed by way of the secretary's announcement and my seconding it by way of confirming there are two vacancies. So if anybody's interested, they can notify the chairman.
Thank you, Mr. George. Also for the record, Ms. Solis is here, so that hurt to the attendees. We now have a presentation. The Spring 2021 Statewide Assessments Results for Mrs. Virginia Lados Hill. It's okay for her to stand here?
Oh, I can't dance it now, why don't you come on?
She has a back, she has a back problem. You can't stand here.
I've always been standing here using this wall to support my body, oh my goodness, God, that is not.
What the hell are you doing? You're out of order.
If I can't dance it now, why don't you, oh my goodness?
Just stand, stand, get yourself.
Well, God, if I can't sit down, I have a back injury, why don't you come on? No, I don't appreciate that, please, I'm only stood here. I've always stood up and stood there with my hands up, see?
Stay out there, just could you please just go back over there?
Come on, I can't believe you, fucking I know you.
I can understand you, but I'm saying.
I've always stood here, do two of them, I can't stand it now.
Nobody has ever stood here.
I have too, please. You just haven't been here. And no, I've been 25 years without knowing you, do you really think I would make a mistake doing it if I can't dance it now?
If she can stand on the side, that's all.
I've always stood here, and why are you gonna make a big scene while I can't stand here and stand here now?
You just stand on the side, that's all.
That's what he says.
Somebody has to stand on the side, please stand, please stand on the side.
Wow, I tell you, every evil eye, you will have your day. What I just got, I got served with my bike lost, and I can't sit down, you're gonna really wreck me just by standing? And when I stand here, oh, it will bite you in your ass. It will bite, I've always stood here. I've always stood here. Oh, I tell you, every evil eye, you will rot in hell. And I guarantee you, it's gonna bite you in your ass, and bite the fuck out of you, call up, your life is Johnson in your ass. And look, I told you, I've not even danced it now for 19 years from my accident, and now you're gonna make a big scene?
Ma'am, you're out of order, if you continue, you're gonna be asked to leave the meeting.
Believe me, you will be asked to leave too soon.
Good evening, Lord, for community members.
Oh, people just make you death, no? It will bite you in your ass.
Good evening. Today I am presenting the Spring 2021 Statewide Assessment Results. The three assessments I will be reviewing are the access for English language learners, the alternate access for English language learners, and the dynamic learning maps. These three assessments were required to be administered in person during the reentry phase of the last school year, when we had less than 50% of our students following a hybrid model. Despite the impacts of COVID-19 on learning and testing conditions, we were able to successfully test the majority of our students. For each of the three state assessments, I will be recording on the performance levels, the student participation, the assessment results for total population and subgroup, and intervention strategies. The first assessment, the first assessment I am presenting data on is the access for English language learners. Access stands for assessing comprehension and communication in English state to state for English language learners. In the state of New Jersey, we are required to assess all English language learners on English language acquisition. The access uses six proficiency levels that delineate the English language acquisition students are able to demonstrate. Starting with the most basic level of entering, which is level one, and moving along the continuum to level two, emerging, and level three, developing. At level three, students start using more complex sentences in the target language, which is English. Students who score a 4.5 or above are able to exit the English language learner status. Students who exit are no longer identified as English language learners, but are monitored for one to two years to ensure they no longer need language support. In the table that's presented in front of you, you will see the total number of students who were tested for the Spring 2021 Access for English Language Learners. Due to the pandemic in Spring 2021, the state allowed parents and/or guardians the option to decline assessing their child. The majority of parents and guardians who declined testing were at the elementary level, as you can see in the second column. However, despite the impacts of COVID-19, the district was able to test 95.1% of our English language learners. This table represents the total population of English language learners tested with the percentage of students who scored at each of the proficiency levels in grades K to 12. Circled in red, in grades 3 to 8, over 50% of English language learners scored a proficiency level of 3 or 4. As the proficiency levels increase, so does the complexity of the text in English, which is why we see a dip from proficiency level 3 to 4. This table here represents a sub, sorry. This table here represents a subgroup of the English language learner population. This table here represents a subgroup of the English language learner population tested with the percentage of students who scored at each of the proficiency levels in grades K to 5. This subgroup consists of students who are English language learners and have a learning disability, a learning disability that is not classified as the most significant cognitive disability. A circle in red, in grades 4 to 5, nearly 90% of students who are both English learners and have a learning disability scored a proficiency level of 3 or 4. In grade 4, in grade 4, 55.9% scored as a level 3, and 38.2% scored in level 4. To give us an equal, nearly 90% of the students. The same pattern is seen in grade 5. In grades 6, 7, 9, and 10, the data are not reported to protect students' confidentiality due to the number of students at each of these grade levels being 10 or less students. In grades 8, 11, and 12, the dash means that there weren't any students who were identified as English language learners and with a learning disability. The second assessment I am presenting data on is the alternate access for English language learners. This assessment is administered to English learners with the most significant cognitive disabilities. The alternate access uses six proficiency levels that delineate the English language acquisition students are able to demonstrate. Starting at the most basic level of A1, which is initiating, and moving along the continuum to level 2 and 3, which is exploring and engaging. At P1, students start progressing towards the basic proficiency levels noted in the Access for English Language Learners data assessment. Students who score an A3 or above are able to exit the English language learner status. However, they will still continue to receive services for their learning disabilities. In this slide, we see two tables. The first represents the number of students who participated in the alternate access for English language learners. The district was able to test nearly 95% of our English language learners with most significant cognitive disabilities. In the second table, you'll see the percentage of students scoring at each proficiency level with A3 or higher allowing students to exit. 76% of our English language learners with most significant cognitive disabilities were able to exit the English language learner status. Because only 17 students were tested in the alternate access for ELs, we combined the number of students at each grade level for each proficiency to protect student confidentiality. So as you can see in the second table, it says grades 1 to 3 as well as grade 9. The last assessment I'm presenting data on is the Dynamic Learning Maps, also known as the DLM. Our students who participated in the DLM have significant cognitive disabilities and do not participate in the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, known as the NJSLA. The Dynamic Learning Maps uses four performance levels that delineate the knowledge skills and practices presented by the essential elements that students are able to demonstrate. Starting at the most basic level, level 1, emerging, and moving along the trajectory to level 2, approaching the target, level 3 at target, and level 4 advanced. In the DLM, the three content areas assessed are English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science. The district was able to test approximately 91% of our students eligible for DLM in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and 81.3% of our students eligible for DLM in Science. When reporting percentages of students at each performance level, because the number of students tested at each grade level, with the exception of grade 7, was less than 10, we suppressed the data to protect student confidentiality for all three content areas. Therefore, the data in ELA and Mathematics is being reported in two groups, elementary and secondary. Science as one group. In English Language Arts, elementary and secondary levels, and Mathematics at the elementary level only, there was a larger percentage of students scoring at a performance level of 2 and 3. However, in Mathematics at the secondary level and Science, there are areas for improvement which require additional interventions to support individualized cognitive needs of our students. In closing, to support our English language learners and our students with disabilities, we are implementing new and revised instructional programs and intervention strategies. Instructional programs for English Language Arts, after reviewing multiple measures of data, we are providing additional supports for our English language learners in the area of English as a Second Language, ESL, Guided Reading, and foundational essential skills in Mathematics, using the instructional programs noted on this slide. Within these programs, we are implementing the following intervention strategies. We're integrating language practices for reading, writing, listening, and/or speaking in multiple disciplines. We are providing frequent opportunities for students to share their thinking and understanding verbally and in writing with teacher as well as with their peers. We are being intentional of using a variety of modalities, techniques, to help students express and make connections among concepts. And specific intervention strategies for our students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. We are proactively planning varied approaches to what students need to learn, how they will learn it, and how they will show what they have learned in order to increase the likelihood that each student will learn as much as he or she can as efficiently as possible. This concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you very much for that wonderful thorough presentation. Any questions for the board? Nope, hearing none. Thank you so much. Great work. Item number four, the minutes, September 21st, 2021. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis? Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela? Ms. Sevilla? Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
The motion is approved. Item number five, superintendent's report, Dr. Aubrey A. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. As my report for the month of October, we have enrolled 9,776 students. For the month of September, we had zero cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. There were 39 suspensions in the month of September. Staff attendance was at 96%. Student attendance was at 90%. For the month of September, we had seven positive cases for employees, and we had 22 positive cases for students. In light of the Delta variant, which poses a significant risk to unvaccinated individuals, and per Governor Murphy's Executive Order Number 253, unvaccinated employees are required to be tested at a minimum of one to twice each week effective Monday, yesterday, October 18. As a result, in New Brunswick, unvaccinated employees are required to be tested twice per week due to the COVID-19 Activity Level Index, which is currently high in Central East New Jersey. As a courtesy, our district will continue to provide COVID-19 testing on a weekly basis at multiple school locations. We are also concluding the administration of the Fall 2021 Stark Strong Data Assessment and currently reviewing preliminary results which provide an early indication of the level of support students may need based on prior year's academic standards. The Stark Strong assessment were administered to students enrolled in English Language Arts, grades 4 through 10; Mathematics, grades 4 through 8, Algebra 1, Algebra 2, and Geometry; and for Science in grades 6, 9, and 12. We are using this preliminary data as one measure to provide academic support for our students and generate purposeful teaching and learning conversations with our educators, with our students, and parents on the learning progression that's needed to meet students where they are and to move them forward. To complement this, our in-person extended day program and virtual tooling programs will begin this week in all elementary, middle, and high school schools. The in-person extended day school day program will provide students with literacy, mathematics, and science support to assist students in meeting and exceeding academic standards. Their virtual tooling program will provide students with focus and individualized support in English Language Arts and Mathematics, specifically to students struggling with specific concepts taught in class and with a broad range of strategies for deeper understanding of content. This week, parent-teacher conferences for students in grades K to 8 are taking place on Wednesday, October 20th, Thursday, October 21st, and Friday, October 22nd. The high school parent-teacher conference is scheduled for Thursday, October 28th, and schools will provide both in-person and virtual meetings for our parents. This month, when the Brunswick Public Schools is proud to join our community and the nation in Autism Awareness Month. This designation provides us an excellent opportunity to expand our perspective while acknowledging the educators and healthcare professionals' commitment in providing support to students throughout the ADHD community. October is also National Principals Month. National Principal Month recognizes the central role that principals play in making a school great. Principals are among the hardest-working yet often least-recognized individuals in education. So I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of our school principals and celebrate them for their steadfast support and leadership, more so during these unprecedented times. Last month, we shared a media release recognizing one of our own teachers, our very own Melissa Vega, for being named the 2021-2022 Middlesex County Teacher of the Year by the New Jersey Department of Education. Tap into, New Brunswick actually published a very nice article on Ms. Vega. So if you have not read it, take a look at it. It's a very great article that really highlighted her accomplishments. She has provided service to the district for the past 17 years and is the second New Brunswick Public School educated to earn county-level recognition the past three years. We are very proud of Ms. Vega and this great accomplishment. Thank you, Ms. Vega, for preparing and powering, inspiring our students and teachers to be like law learners and leaders. It's important to just note for two teachers to be recognized within the past three years as a county Teacher of the Year emulates the hard and dedicated work our teachers are accomplishing here in New Brunswick. I do want to diverge from my script here, and I know that our board members do not want me to say much, but I do have to pause and just thank our board members who are no longer on the panel here, Ms. Sadowski and Ms. Sukaitis. Many years of service, I can't pull the numbers off the back of my head, but I'm sure Ms. Sadowski has been on this board for over 24 years, and Ms. Sukaitis more than four years. And I just need to say, even though they are trying to go quietly, that it's important that we recognize their commitment and their work and their, you know, steadfast determination to do what's right for the students of New Brunswick, and not only the students of New Brunswick, the staff of New Brunswick. And, you know, as I think of these individuals, you know, I could just remember a lot of the phone calls that I've received. And what I really think I cherish and I hope close to is their empathetic view on everything. Not taking sides, but understanding a teacher's view, understanding a student's view, understanding a staff view, understanding parents' views, and trying to come to consensus on what's best for kids, and that's always been the focus. So I must say that we will miss them, I will miss them, but I will acquire and continue to emulate a lot of the, not skills, a lot of their soul in terms of this work that we do each and every day. So I must, I cannot let this opportunity go by without at least speaking and recognizing Ms. Pat Sadowski and Ms. Sukaitis. Finally, it's with deep regret that we announced the passing of one of our own, Mr. James Hairston, security officer at New Brunswick Middle School. I mean, Mr. Hairston served the district for over 15 years, and he will be greatly missed. Every time I walk, you know, what I will remember about him is his demeanor when I visit the school, his professionalism, his candor. It was just always the same. And I know that he has provided our students and our families and our community members a great service here. He will be truly missed, and I'll just ask the board just to give a brief moment of silence. Thank you. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, wonderful words. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
For me.
Second?
Second.
Roll call up here.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood? Mrs. Solis?
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Sevilla? Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number six, many of you don't know that our student representative had another tennis match today, is wearing the tennis outfit, and so she in the regular season is 15 and 2, so congratulations. So, Ms. Ashley, roll call, the student representative's report.
Good evening. Our fall seasons are quickly approaching the end of the regular season. New Brunswick High School students have been able to participate in the following events: football, cheerleading, volleyball, soccer, tennis, and cross-country. COVID-19 protocols have been in place and enforced throughout the season. On September 30th, 2021, New Brunswick High School welcomed parents to come into the school and meet with staff. Parents received information about COVID-19 protocols, grading, transportation, and instruction. Additionally, teachers created videos that are accessible online for parents to view at any time. Common areas, including the media center, gymnasium, auditorium, and cafeteria, were available to view and tour. On October 2nd, 2021, hundreds of students turned out for the SAT exam with COVID-19 protocols set in place. On October 12th, New Brunswick High School students, accounting students joined the city club. Joined the city of New Brunswick administrators Richard Morin, Michael Drewlis, and Jennifer Bradshaw for a conversation about different career paths in finance and accounting. Students engaged city officials with specific questions regarding job responsibilities and career outlooks. On October 13th, after a virtual 2020 event, our senior convocation was back in person. Students arrived for dinner with their peers at New Brunswick High School to start the evening. After some photo opportunities, students joined parents and staff in the auditorium. Speeches were provided by the president of the Board of Education, superintendent, principal, vice-principal, and multiple students. Students were asked to reflect on their accomplishments as they finished their final year at the high school. The ceremony was uplifting and viewed as a step towards normalcy for the 2021 to 2022 school year. Thank you, this concludes my report.
Thank you, the student representative. Thank you, the student representative, the report, the Facilities Committee report. Item number seven, Mr. Edward Spencer, chairperson.
Yes, Mr. President. The Facilities Committee met last week. We discussed the Blanqueta B. Volante County School Project, which is a update. DMR Augustex has completed 75% of the required construction documents needed to build the school. They are now scheduled to reach 100% documents by the end of this month. The foundation and structural portion of the documents are currently 100% complete. The final educational approval was received from the Department of Education on August 18th. As the name implies, this is the last approval needed from the Department of Education. NJDCA build review is currently in progress for structural steel and underslam plumbing work. Elevator plan review release was received on 8th, August 16th, and partial electrical underground plan review was received on September 7th. Treatment works approval was August 11th, 2021. An order main extension permit was submitted August 20th. Stormwater management plan review conditional approval was August 20th. And Delaware Raritan Canal Commission approval was September 15th. The full site soil erosion and sediment control plan approval was September 20th. All pre-construction remedial actions have been completed, including removal of all contaminated soil and concrete from the site. Evacuation of contaminated materials included the removal of a total of 623 tons of PCB impact or petroleum-impacted concrete and soil, which equals 28 truckloads, total, was removed under the direction of the licensed site remediation professionals for this project. 25 truckloads of PCB-impacted concrete and soil was evacuated June 28th through July 1st. This material was exported from the site on July 6th to the 7th. Three truckloads of petroleum-impacted oil soil was evacuated June 28th and exported July 17th. Capping of the historic film on the site will occur during the building, construction, and site development phase. The current schedule has site demolition, clearing, and grading continuing through the end of this month. Additionally, the slit fencing has been installed and grading control points set. On October 21st, October 12th, special testing and inspection services was awarded to Atlantic Engineering Laboratories. Evacuations for footings, foundations, and formwork, including re-bond and concrete work, is occurring between October 1st and January 15th of 2022. The start of the structural steel erection is currently scheduled for January 15th, 2022. Substantial completion of the school is still scheduled for August 2023. That, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Great report, Mr. Spencer. A lot is going on, it's exciting, very exciting. We will move to the Athletic Committee report. Ms. Sevilla?
Good evening, everyone. I have some exciting news about sports. I'll be presenting first on some of the administrative stuff. All the coaches are getting approved for winter sports. The stadiums and in terms of the field is fixed, there were some damages that were, that happened because of the hurricane, and that has been taken care of. And we happy to also report that all the lights are replaced, so. We also know that we have about 328 students that signed up for fall sports, with 47 also that have signed up for winter sports, and this is within just a few days of announcing that they were signing up or starting to sign up for winter sports. We also have the tryouts for winter sports on the 22nd and the 23rd of November, which will be right before Thanksgiving break. And in continuing with the COVID protocol, students are also, they're being very diligent on that and testing twice a week for some of the, what they consider high-risk sports, such as wrestling and so on. I do have some sports in terms of the scores. We have football, they're three and four, and very, because I have a couple of good news here. Boys soccer team, they ate six and one, and they're, believe entering into the GNC tournament. They're 14th place, and they had just recently had a win that made it into the seventh place as well. Girls soccer, they're three, 10, and two. Tennis, I have the score, it's supposed to be 10, 6, but I guess it's 11, 6 now, right? And we have volleyball, which they're six and 11, and they're ranked 12th in the state and qualify for playoffs, so. In cross-country, we have boys being one and zero and girls being zero and one, and they're the second place in division championships. Also would like to highlight that homecoming is on October 22nd, which is this Friday, so I hope to see everyone here in the audience. And I would also like to, I've been, I'm following one of the pages, New Brunswick Sebras, which they're doing, it's doing a great job at showing some of the current, as it's going on, gains, so I encourage everyone to please follow them as well. That's an Instagram page, New Brunswick Sebras, and that's all for, in terms of that. I also would like to have a motion to approve the bank reconciliation.
Wonderful. Is there a motion?
No.
Saiga?
Rebecca.
Roll call.
Mr. Ortiz?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawright?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Sevilla?
Yes.
Dr. Kova?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Wonderful, thank you. Item number nine, Curriculum Policy Committee report. Mrs. Emra Alseawood, chairperson.
Turn it on. The Curriculum Instruction Committee met, and then we also reviewed some policy revisions. In addition to the statewide assessment results, we were presented highlights of the emergency virtual instruction program plan. New Brunswick Public Schools Emergency Virtual Instruction Plan would be implemented during a district closure lasting more than three consecutive school days due to a declared state of emergency, declared public health emergency, or a directive by the appropriate health agency or officer to institute a public health-related closure. District closure would be declared by the Superintendent of Schools in consultation with the Board of Education, if practical, prior to implementing the school district's plan of virtual or remote instruction. Second, it is divided into two plans according to grade level. Students in grades pre-K through second will be contacted by the school to make arrangements to pick up the student's device, along with any additional materials needed for virtual instruction. Students in grades three through 12 travel to and from school daily with their district-issued devices. In the case of an emergency, school closure, grade three through 12 students will be able to resume instruction upon the first day of virtual instruction. Schools can make arrangements for families to pick up any additional materials needed for virtual instruction. The second thing we covered was the community partners. For a number of months, the department has met with all board-approved community partners that will be working with our students in person to review the developed protocols to ensure the safety of students and staff. The resources will provide guidance and are required to be adhered to by all staff members and community partners working in our district, inside and outside of our schools. We reviewed all resolutions and approved submission to the full board. There were multiple donations of backpacks and school supplies. The Center for Supportive Schools will develop and facilitate training for staff for the Day of Discipline with a focus on understanding theories of bias and systemic oppression, along with application of theories to their school and community experiences. In addition, another resolution we wanted to highlight, Girls' On Run of Central New Jersey will provide an eight-week social and emotional wellness program for girls in grades three through eight, which culminates with a celebratory 5K run. So we expect all of you to participate.
Yeah.
Maybe I should say, we invite all of you to participate. And we reviewed policies, regulations that are up for, that were revised, and we're recommending approval, and they're included on the agenda too. Board member election and appointment. We had to, we went through revised, this policy to remove language in accordance with the statute and added language in accordance to NJSA 18A 12 through 15. Second policy, we looked at remote public board meeting during a declared emergency has revised the language in Section 6A from, to allow public comment to be submitted in a reasonable deadline to, quote, "allow public comments to be submitted at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting." And Policy 0167, public participation in board meetings has revised the language in item one from, quote, "register their intent with the board secretary in advance of the meeting," to, quote, "register their intent with the board secretary at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting." New policy we looked at in regards, in response to Executive Order 253, that was the school employee vaccination requirements, and I believe Dr. Johnson had mentioned that earlier. The, at the virtual or remote instruction program, a policy is included to go on that. This is new policy. Commissioner approved program of virtual study due to a declared state of emergency, and that does have to be submitted to the state Board of Education for signing off. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Seawood, for that report. Item number 10, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey. In between our last meeting and here, we had, I think I mentioned we were going to have a forum with the county, facilitated by the county prosecutor on the mental health of young people, of youth in the county, and it was very, very well-attended with educators and public, public safety and politicians and prosecutors, and so a great discussion about really the emerging challenges that we have, and you know, as we're hopefully coming out of the pandemic, there's a lot of stress, and as I've pointed, this urban traumatic stress disorder is very, very real, that folks are, and young people, and older people, and first responders are all dealing with the trauma, so that was a big, big success. So we'll move to item number 12, the public comments. Again, public comments, if you would, those that have registered, Javier, if you can state your name and address. Javier, who do we have first?
The first person on the list is Daniel Moore.
Moore, please state your name and address.
I tell you, my friend Daniel Moore, and I tell you, wow, God was trying to tell you, think back, we see when your microphones kept doing that, trying to tell you, wow, how could you disrespect me? And what, what, what due to where I did this standing, all leading to where I have a back in my life? You let these two gentlemen come up here and what, proporcied me out of the way, when you wouldn't say anything? I tell you, I will say my prayers, Dr. Kova, Dr. Johnson, you, and you, that it will come back and bite you in your rear end, and you will feel the pain. Ask this for Egan, when he disrespected me over my back, it's on video. Wow, he couldn't walk for two weeks, and I will surely say my prayers, that you feel the pain, due to where I sat, I could not sit down, and you feel like, just go in a big situation, put it here, like I believe that nobody do something? I'm not a bad person. When I'm a person that I was born and think from the Lord, it's a mission to help save people, but like I said, you will have your day. You will feel the pain, and I will surely say my prayers, for, for, for you to disrespect me, when I can't sit down? And the kind of, what came, what do I, I proceeded them Thursday, and for you two not to say anything to them? You know, it will bite you in your rear end, all four of you. And one thing I did to tell you, I will say, like I said, oh yes, my prayers, when he hurt, when he disrespected me, and most I know, for the third year, I went to school, going, but I can't, because I can't sit down, why you live in that city, walking all the time, but I can't sit down? I have a back in me for nineteen years. But like I said, I will say my prayers, that you feel and remember the pain that I brought you before you. And I will sadly say thank you to Captain Lovada, Sergeant LaBonne, due to where, what, two leaders, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Kova, why you would even take the time to take me serious? And I said, wow, the work, so your vision, you wouldn't look at the videos or pictures or anything, but I thank those two, and then Officer Luca, Officer Ramirez, and Officer Pimenta, when they've been helping out, blocking off the road on Nelson and Delavan, with the call to have a police car on site, where making sure all, that children are safe. all, all the children are safe. I wouldn't do things that, like I said, wow, because I would like everybody to feel the pain, and how you all try to make it like I'm evil, just to save somebody else from getting injured? That I'm negative, I would say, oh, I feel negative, but what, the Lord lets me see something for a reason, I still want to destroy somebody who's getting hurt or injured, but do you care? And if you learn your lesson, you don't got your plate, like I said, you will get another one, because I would say my prayers. And like I said, due to where, what, yeah, how I'm the one doing the work, not the man, not you, for safety, what, why spoke of one situation with gay women, and a tax train off of 50 Jersey Avenue, what, it's being done, why, and I fought for it, and counting all, all these safety issues, but what, what are you doing? Nothing, because you don't care. Like I said, what, in 50 Jersey Avenue, what, you still have people sleeping over there, over 30 people still sleeping over there, but how you didn't take the construction job started, where, what, you have over 30 tents over there? Click, please, like I said, you tell people to do your research, do yours, because like I said, and if you don't, neither one of you belong in that chair. And like I said, I can't say it, but so many times, I will say my prayers, that you feel, I remember the pain, I was not, even though it was tough, and it was trying to hurt me, due to where, sure, I was not coming from the, like I said, wow, you hurt, and you disrespect me, that I can't, that I can't sit down. And like I said, Lord, I'm trying to tell you something, because like I told you before, Dr. Caldwell, wow, when you disrespected me, yeah, you're trying to notice, huh? And I say, say it, yeah, what, due to where, trying to tell you something. But like I said, I was surely saying my prayers, you know, I, I only have a message, like I said, it was going to hurt me for a while, but before you would disrespect me, that I can't, that I can't sit down. And like I said, wow, when you disrespect me, so I didn't, like, I feel, what, yes, I respect champion, I'm trying to, wow.
Mrs. Moore, you have been more seconds.
But like I said, I will say my prayers, why you're your ass.
Have a good evening.
Why you're your ass.
Javier, who's next?
Charles Cradaville.
You state your name and address, please.
Good evening, members of the board, Charles Cradaville. I want to say thank you to the board members that are not with us anymore on the board. I definitely think that back when Ms. Zdowski ran the meetings, they were a lot more open and just, just better in terms of dialogue and public input. And I didn't really get the chance to know Ms. Shkitis very well, but nevertheless, I know that it's not an easy job that the board has, and it's a volunteer position, so I want to thank them for their service. And I do want to ask you, it was alluded to, that if folks are interested in applying to serve in those vacant positions, that they should contact you. Mr. Chairman, can you tell us, what is the best way for someone to contact you? What, you know, email, and what should they send?
I'll defer to our council. George. Does email?
Yeah.
Email to you? To you? Okay, if you could email it to, to me, it's on the, on the website.
All right, there, your address with the district on the website. And should they include anything specific, a resume, or, um, just a letter?
Letter, resume.
Okay, thank you. Can you tell me what process the board is going to use to, to make the selection?
Well, I think there's a lot of process, uh, like, like policy.
Sorry, they, the board can consider anyone they know in the community, or people apply, and they, they're appealing, the board will, will dialogue this.
Okay, I understand.
And have their discussion after they decide the number of people involved, maybe it'll only be two, that won't be easy, but if they're four, they would discuss, and they would vote on each one of them, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. I understand there was a change.
In public, they vote, and in public, they discuss, that's required by the statute, and we'll do that.
I understand there was a change in the policy on this matter tonight. Could somebody, Mr. Hendricks, send me a copy of the updated, the new version of the policy?
It doesn't change much of anything. The statute was wrong, I don't know how that got in there, I certainly didn't do it, but it referred to regional boards, and then when we were discussing it, I sent it to the policy committee. I think the old policy required interviews of candidates and all those things. Board didn't want to do that, so the policy was amended just to state that, you know, we announce in public, and then people can apply.
Okay, can somebody send me a copy of the revised policies? So I have it, it's not in the pack.
I think it's available. I don't have it. Yeah, we have to approve it, then it becomes a board policy.
Okay, and then how can I get it?
Be on the website, or what?
It'll be on the website.
Yeah, it'll be on the website, Charles.
Later tonight, tomorrow? We're not sure yet. Okay, time is of the essence. Would it be possible that your attorney could just email it to me?
Well, send me an email, attorney. I don't have it yet, I don't think it'll find a form, because the policy committee dealt with it. As the board attorney, I don't have it yet, but when I get it, if you email me, I'll send you a copy.
Thank you, sir. I will email, and I hope to get that swiftly, because time is of the essence. At the last meeting, I brought up a number of things. One was for Mr. Janarum, he said he was going to research the Viata Health, Home Healthcare. He's not here today, is he still the BA? Where is he today?
He's out sick, he, he's out sick, that's all. He's still the BA, of course.
Thank you, I wish him a speedy recovery. I also brought up the leaky windows at Robeson, there was no update. Mr. Ladolche said at the last meeting, we'll update you as soon as we know more. Is there any update?
Yes, continue to work with the SDA, they've done some pressure testing on the building at this point, the windows, they feel they have the majority of the issue under control, but they're still doing some research on that, and we'll work with them to get it resolved. So it's making progress, but not finalized at this point, to our satisfaction.
Thank you, Mr. Ladolche. It was mentioned there was a media release about a teacher who's doing good. You know, and as somebody who runs New Brunswick today, I don't think I got a copy of that media release tonight. Respectfully ask that media releases be sent to New Brunswick today?
Yeah, we'll, we'll send it.
Okay, thank you kindly. And then finally, I do want to caution the board, or say that you better be careful to review the Americans with Disabilities Act. I don't see what point we serve by trying to get Ms. Moore to sit down, force her to sit down, and then force her to stand over there instead of, you know, 10 feet over where she normally stands. I don't think anything was accomplished by that, except really hurting her feelings, and it was, it was not easy to watch. I can certainly, you know, say that, that was wrong, and, and, you know.
Mr. Cradaville, your time is up.
We're, we're at the, I mean, for the record, she was just asked to move over to not force her to sit down.
He kept forcing me to tell him that I had to sit down.
This disrupted the, this, 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 it was ugly to watch. Time's up.
We don't need that here. We should respect his claim really here.
For the record, she disrupted the meeting, and I could have kicked her out. And so we, we were actually very nice to her, we just asked her to move over to the next panel. So we were actually extraordinarily nice to her, so thank you very much.
I don't think this is a, 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 this